This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our June Board of Selectmen meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, before we get started tonight, and before I bring in Bill and Sally, I wanted to speak to you about something that I think is very important. This is the first time that I've been on TV since this senseless and brutal tragedy on May 25th. And our hearts here in North Haven go out to George Floyd and his family. Ladies and gentlemen, after watching that video, I was appalled, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of many North Haven residents, if not all North Haven residents, from the standpoint that it was repugnant, it was senseless, it was barbaric. And tonight, before we get started, I'd like to offer a moment of silence for George Floyd. But before we do that, I want to assure every one of our citizens that North Haven's a community that embraces diversity, embraces, welcomes the different cultures. North Haven's a community that helps everyone regardless of race, creed, and color. And our North Haven Police Department embodies those same components in terms of how we view and how we help and how we support all of our residents. This town government loves every single person here in town regardless of race, creed, and color. But I was deeply disturbed with what I saw, with four officers brutally murdering poor George Floyd. And once again, our hearts go out to the Floyd family. We spent a lot of time down through the years, ladies and gentlemen. Back in 2014, the governor and the state of Connecticut appointed me to sit on police officer standard training. And in the past six years, we've worked very hard, working with police chiefs all across the state on things like de-escalation, cultural diversity, and how to handle situations from a policing standpoint. I'm very proud of our North Haven Police Department. And I'd like to read to you tonight a press release that they put out for those who may not have seen it. "Today, we want to address our community on behalf of the North Haven Police Department. We share in the anger many in our community and across the country are feeling about the death of George Floyd. Unfortunately, the actions in Minneapolis and Minnesota erode the layers of trust, confidence, and goodwill that so many police officers have built in our respective communities and in our community. Each person deserves to be treated with dignity and respect." And the North Haven Police Department goes on to write, "This is the foundation of our profession. Any violation of these core tenets is inexcusable. Police officers are sworn to be protectors, guardians of towns, cities, or estates that we serve. We undertake responsibilities with the knowledge that officers serve our communities best when we all work together. It is with the support of our community that we, as law enforcement officers, uphold the law fairly, justly, professionally, and with accountability for ourselves and our fellow officers. Accountability to each other and accountability to our community is the foundation of trust, and that is the responsibility of every officer to uphold and maintain that trust. The North Haven Police Department will continue to serve with professionalism that our community deserves and has come to expect." So ladies and gentlemen, before we get started tonight, a moment of silence for George Floyd and his grieving family. Thank you very much. I'd like to now bring in both Sally and Bill. And I want to let everyone know, before I ask Sally and Bill to say hello, that our goal for the next Board of Selectmen meeting, which will be in July, to have both Sally and Bill back with us socially distanced at this table here. And we're working on that, and that's our goal for July. Sally and Bill, Sally, start, please say hello.
Yes, I'd like to say hello to all the North Haveners. This is Sally Abamey, the third selectman. Michael, I commend your statement, and I support it fully regarding George Floyd, and I certainly am very appreciative of Police Chief Tom McLaughlin's statement on account of the board on behalf of the North Haven Police Department. I think his accountability equivalent to trust is such an essential message, and I support that. I think that the vast majority of Americans were, as you so adeptly put, were horrified by the events with George Floyd. And it was truly an opportunity to unite the country. Unfortunately, some of the protesting got out of hand, and some opportunists took advantage of the situation, and it diluted really what was a unifying message. And perhaps there wasn't the leadership that we could have had at the national level. But I fully support your words, Michael, on behalf of the town of North Haven, and I thank you for giving that message tonight. I think it was very important for you to have done that.
Okay, thank you. William?
Bill Piper, thank you, Mike and Sally, for both your comments, which I think were very heartfelt and appropriate, both from the standpoint of Mike and also from our Police Department, and its dedication and sense of service and fairness and equality toward all the residents of North Haven, as you said. One thing I thought that Mike said was important that I've been reading about, I think that maybe not all Police Departments, not only at North Haven, but maybe at the state level, but maybe Police Departments in other areas of the country, have not been involved in, or maybe haven't had enough involvement with, de-escalation training. So I think that's very important to maybe, you know, I think just based on the nature and the danger of the danger of the work that our Police Department and our policemen have to go through, I think any level of additional training to help them cope with sometimes very difficult situations is exactly the thing that they need. I'm kind of encouraged by the fact that, you know, Mike, you've championed that maybe not only within the town of North Haven, but at the state level.
Sally and Bill, before I actually call the meeting to order, I also wanted to let both of you know that since we last got together at this Board of Selectmen meeting, we could not have our Memorial Day Parade honoring the veterans. And we did play, ladies and gentlemen, the 2015 Memorial Day Parade. That was an idea that Sally had come up with, and that was her father, who was one of those wonderful veterans who were in that parade. And I also decided to replay the 2008 Memorial Day Parade as Bill Piper's son, Carl. That was the last parade he marched in, and Carl, at a young age, passed away. So for each of you, Sally and Bill, when we get together next month, I have had put together copies of those DVDs for each of you, for you to keep and add to your collection. So I wanted you to know that.
Well, that's great, Michael. I appreciate that you did make the arrangement to run the 2015 Parade, which honored the World War II veterans commemorating the 70th anniversary of the end of World War II. I had 11 World War II veterans in the parade, and most, including my dad and Mr. Howard Loopy, a former member of the Board of Selectmen, and others have since passed. And I look forward to getting that DVD. It was great to see my dad, and so I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome. Okay.
My thanks, too, from the standpoint of not only me, but my family.
Okay.
I think it was a nice gesture, and I think in terms of being involved in both parades, it was nice, it was very nice having the ability to, actually, it may not be a bad idea even in future years, you know, to, over Memorial Day weekend, maybe to pick other parades if they have them available.
Yeah, that's a great idea, other special event parades.
Yeah, for other years. I mean, especially, you know, when you look back to, I'm not sure how far back they have them, or how, you know, but I think it's always, it's always great to look back, and especially where you may have marched it, you know, not only with maybe, you know, with Republican or Democratic Town Committee, but maybe with Little League, or softball, or, you know, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, I mean, all the things that, you know, I think a lot of us participated in in town, and the chance to kind of see something from what was a very memorable occasion, but it's always good seeing it again because you forget so much, you know, even from 2015.
Okay, thank you both.
And even though we couldn't have the parade, which was sad, but understandable, we did have a rain date ceremony on the green this past Saturday, which I thought was well attended, and it was a very nice ceremony with some eloquent speeches honoring our all veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice. And I thought it was a great ceremony, and we were able to have it with appropriate social distancing. So I, again, thank not only Mr. Frida, but Post 76 for that nice event this past Saturday. I believe that was May 30th.
30th, right. Okay, so I'm going to officially call the meeting to order. Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard Sally and Bill on the line, and I'd like, we will be standing here at Town Hall. I will be to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we will move to item number three, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting on May 7th.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 7th meeting, not minutes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, so hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. All right, item number four, the approval of the minutes of the special Board of Selectmen meeting, which took place on May 29th. Is there a motion?
I'll motion to approve those minutes.
Before I second that, I just wanted to say, on the third page of those minutes, we had a motion from Mr. Frida, seconded by Mr. Piper, to enter into executive session, and I had voted no on that, and the minutes report me voting yes.
Okay.
I was voting no in particular to items A and B, but since they were presented as one motion for all three, I had voted no. So can we amend the minutes to accurately reflect my no vote on that motion?
Of course we can, yes.
Okay.
So we're making note on that right now, Sally.
So with that change, I will second the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that amendment has been made.
Thank you.
All right, item number five on the first selectman's overview. I wanted to share with the public and Sally and Bill here that you've heard me say at previous meetings, particularly on my COVID-19 updates, that I had 37 economic development projects that had come to a screeching halt. And I'm happy to report that although those 37 projects are not back in motion, we're now starting to see, and I'm spending a little bit more time on this now, in terms of bringing back some of these opportunities that we've had here. And I'm happy to report that we now have three or four opportunities, and one I'd like to make a comment on tonight. So recently, we announced, or it has been announced, that Hartford Hospital is coming to the old Sports Authority. This was a project, ladies and gentlemen, that I had been working on for about 10 months. Now, the old Sports Authority is a 50,000-square-foot box retailer, and Sports Authority, you all may recall, went through a national bankruptcy and closed all their stores across the country a few years back. The owner of the plaza, National Realty, and I have worked very closely together since I took office back in December of 2009. And we have had collectively, the town and the owner of the plaza, a difficult time attracting a retailer there. We had some opportunities for a supermarket, but even unbeknownst to me, I learned a valuable lesson early on when I got involved with that project, that back in the early 1980s, when Stop &amp; Shop and Universal Distributors sold the plaza and sold the land, sold the land which then became the plaza, to the owner of the plaza, there was a stipulation that no grocery store could go in that plaza. And that was one of the reasons years back that Target came in, because that was an agreement in place. So I, you know, I talk to a lot of people in town. I try to respond to everybody on Facebook when I get messaged. So I want everyone to know that although we've tried to get a supermarket down in that plaza, we can't because of the restriction from the early 1980s when the plaza was sold. So now what we're seeing, and I've talked about this before, the complexion of these plazas is starting to change. We're seeing more medical units. We see the Veins Clinic down there, which we brought in a couple of years back. Hartford Hospital will be taking almost all of the 50,000 square feet with medical services for our community that actually are greater than what we currently have in town. And to populate an empty building, 50,000 square feet, with institution like that is a success for North Haven. Now, it may not be what a lot of us would have liked to have seen, a Trader Joe's, another supermarket down in the Montague section, but it is a very important addition to our town. And lastly, the 80,000-square-foot retailer that I've been talking about on and off in the Best Buy Plaza. I'm going to divulge tonight what the retailer could be, but the pandemic has ground that to a halt. And we're working with the plaza owner, who's a good colleague of mine. We've developed a wonderful relationship down through the years. He's located in California. He owns the Best Buy Plaza. The name of the retailer is At Home, A-T Home. At Home is a gigantic home goods, and many of you are familiar with home goods. So this would be an amplified and expanded version of what home goods currently is in the communities that home goods is in right now. But we're faced with this pandemic, which has ground a lot of retail stores to a halt. So I'm hoping to have an update on this. I'm divulging the name tonight publicly for the first time, and we have to do everything we can to ensure that we don't lose this opportunity as a result of this pandemic that we're going through, because retail store sales, other than supermarkets, have really declined. And one final statistic before we move on in this meeting, that if we look at same-store retail sales through April of 2020 versus April of 2019, not including supermarkets and grocery stores, it's off anywhere from 85% to 93%, which is staggering when you consider that. Online sales have grown significantly as people are ordering through a lot of different areas, but the brick-and-mortar aspect has declined just staggeringly. So that is what I wanted to say tonight. I'll have more updates. We now are going to be moving forward with planning and zoning meetings and ZBA meetings. We are gradually getting back to restoring the normalcy of our government. And as I mentioned earlier to Sally and Bill and our fine audience here, that my goal is next month that we have a resumption of what our Board of Selectmen meetings have been down through the years, with Sally and Bill here socially distanced apart from each other. So thank you. Now, I wanted to give Sally the courtesy. She had a couple of questions and discussion items on item number six. So Sally, I'm going to give you the floor here, okay?
Yes, before we get to my agenda items, I just have a follow-up on your overview.
Yes.
The Hartford Hospital going to the Sports Authority location, are they taking the entire 50,000 square feet, or is that their intention?
Right now, Sally and Bill, they're committing to 38,000 to 40,000 square feet. And we have another store, or we have another entity that we can put into the 10 or 12. However, they might end up taking the 50,000 square feet and just do the total expansion all at once, as opposed to the original thought, take the 38 or 40, and then expand over the course of the next few months with the balance. So I anticipate it could very well be 50,000, the entire, but it will at least be 38,000 to 40,000 square feet. But in the end, it's going to be fully occupied by either Hartford Hospital or Hartford Hospital and another entity.
Right. The, well, you know, it would be great to have more medical services in town. You've talked a great deal over the years about our medical epicenter over on Divine Street, which serves not only North Haven citizens, but Hamden, Wallingford, North Branford. That, of course, would be bringing in some employment opportunities, but then you have the tax-exempt status of hospitals. So that would have an impact a bit, but our pilot may go up, right?
So I think, well, I know the way that's going to work is they're going to be tenants.
They're going to be tenants, so it won't affect...
So the building is, yes, it won't affect the tax base.
Right, so it won't affect the real estate taxes, I know that, but as far as any other personal property tax or whatnot, that's...
Yeah, that would fall in pilot.
The primary advantage would be employment opportunities and, of course, increased medical service.
Yes. And I think the other benefit will be that because the plaza is empty now...
Yeah.
When it gets fitted out, there should be an appreciation of the real estate value because there now is something new in there. So I think we'll get a slight lift on that, too, in terms of...
And it would help the other retail stores in the area there for bringing more people in.
Now, in the spirit of full disclosure, folks, you know, I am very friendly with the CEO of the Yale Healthcare System. In fact, she and I, Marna, were together just before the pandemic, and we've talked about this, the fact that Hartford Hospital is coming in. So in the end, I think competition is good, particularly with healthcare services. And in the end, you know, we have an obligation here in town to fill these empty buildings. And I think it's going to be good for everybody, and, you know, with Yale's healthcare system's CEO, we have a great relationship, and they understand, so.
Okay, thank you. So can we move on now?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, I appreciate you putting my two items on. Hopefully, we could get through these quickly because they've been discussed a bit before publicly. I just, the first one is the supernumerary program while school is not in session. First, I want to say that I fully supported the supernumerary program. I spoke in favor of it very strongly at the June 2018 town meeting, in which we adopted the ordinance for this school security supernumerary program, and I fully support it. In fact, you could argue it might have been a bit overdue because, as we know, the tragedy of Sandy Hook was perhaps, I believe, about six years earlier. So I fully supported the need for the additional security in the four elementary schools and the middle school. But I just wanted to emphasize that the five supernumeraries that we currently have, one for each elementary school and one in the middle school, are retired officers. They are not, you could consider them part-time. They're not getting benefits, any other benefits. I mean, they're retired police officers, which is a distinction with the SROs, which is School Resource Officer, which we have at the high school. And the SROs are, in fact, active members of the North Haven Police Department. And I'm sure that with the schools being closed during the pandemic, they were assigned to other tasks because they are full-time, active police officers. So that was, I brought this up, or wanted this on the agenda, because I asked a question at the May 14th budget presentation, and I was trying to be very clear in my question to distinguish between supernumeraries, which are these five retired officers in the elementary and middle school, and an SRO, which is an active police officer. You had gone on in your answer, Mike, saying that we do have a distinction. That wasn't my question. I know we have a distinction between the two types of security personnel. I was just worded my question to focus only on the supernumeraries. And my question was whether the five supernumeraries were being paid during the pandemic. And your answer at 1 hour and 37 minutes into the May 14th budget presentation was that they, was that no, but you had said, quote, "Were they paid a little bit after March? Yes, they were, but currently are not being paid." So that's how you answered my question at May 14th. Then, six days later, at the May 20th Board of Finance meeting, during a discussion of the current expenditure report as of April 30th, Board of Finance member Ms. Barrett asked why the supernumeraries were paid $19,700 for April, which would be the normal amount for a full month. And at that time, at minute nine and 58 seconds, you said, and I quote, "We were evaluating where the school system was going to go and if and when the school system was opening, so the Police Department decided to hold on with my approval because we did not want to lose any SROs," again, I think you meant supernumeraries, "any supernumeraries in the event that schools opened back up. But recently, the chief informed me, the supernumerary, informed the supernumeraries that they would not be paid." So that's why I asked to put it on the agenda tonight, because on May 14th, you said they were paid a little bit after March, when in fact, they were paid quite a, they were paid the full month of April and even a little bit into May, because on May 20th, you said that they were, they stopped being paid within the past two weeks of May 20th. So that would be sometime into the first week of May, they were still being paid. And again, I fully support the supernumerary program. I think they're doing a great job, but I don't even understand why they were paid one day after the schools were closed, because our supernumerary ordinance says in Section 132-2, subsection A, and I'm reading it now, it says, "The uniformed supernumerary police officers will be deployed, will be deployed to provide daily security during the full school year, except on school vacation days, school holidays, snow days, professional development days, and any other days when school is not in session." So I just don't, I'm not really clear why they were paid at all once school was closed, whether it was for the balance of March, because I believe schools close March 17th or very, or thereabouts. So I'm not sure why they were paid the balance of March, the whole month of April, and even a little bit into May. And according to your quote at the Board of Finance meeting, there seemed to be some concern about wanting to hold on to them. You know, I've been an employer for 35 years, and I always pay my employees for the work that they, the time that they've earned. I've never, you know, paid employees for... I've never, you know, paid employees for work not done out of fear that they would quit. So if you could explain to me why they were paid at all beyond March 17?
Okay. Let me start by saying that on May 14, I was seeing these questions for the first time. And I think that everybody knows by now that I'm involved with many, many issues locally, hundreds of issues locally, regional issues as one of the leaders of the Council of Governments, and of course, in my role as Connecticut Conference of Municipalities as President, and helping write some of the executive orders from the Governor's Office. So, I sit here and I'm answering all these questions in detail, and I give the best possible answers I can. And all of them are accurate answers. Now, when we look at this question, perhaps what I should have said when I answered the questions at the, at the meeting that night, when I read Sally's question, was that what happens here in government that I don't expect anybody to understand who's not involved here every day, it's a very intricate operational environment here that I spend a lot of time on in addition to all my other responsibilities. And the intricate operational aspect of town government has many dynamics that it's faced with. During this time, the answers I gave were accurate answers, but perhaps I should have further explained that even though the pandemic hit on or about March 8, it wasn't until May 8 that the governor order came down to say schools were closed. So we stopped paying the supernumeraries right around that time. Now, I trust the police chief's judgment. And of course, we want to ensure that in the event back then that schools were even opening up and it's a facsimile of what they once were, that we had these supernumeraries available. Because as supernumeraries, they have the ability to do outside roadwork. They can be recruited by public utility companies at more money than we're paying them as supernumeraries. So, the police chief made a judgment call and I supported him 1,000% that he wanted to wait to ensure that we had people in place in the event the schools had opened up. And then there's another dynamic we were faced with, ladies and gentlemen. And that was that during that time, we were concerned about our public first responders, police and fire. We were hearing that police officers and firefighters across the state were coming down with COVID. So we had the supernumeraries in place who are certified officers to disenfranchise them immediately when the pandemic started. With the threat possibly, God forbid, that some of our officers could have gone down with COVID-19, we wouldn't have had an appropriate backup system in place for those supernumeraries who could have at least come in and replaced officers who, God forbid, had come down with COVID-19, at least on a part-time basis, so we had at least the adequate public safety that we needed. So when we get questions like this, I don't expect people who are asking the questions to understand the dynamics of what goes on here. Because in fairness to Sally and anyone else, you know, they're not here every day. I deal with the operations every day. And maybe I should have explained it in further detail on May 14. But if you watch the meeting on May 14, the volume and the complexity of the questions that were posed to me, I've got to move on to get all the questions in and I try to give the best answers I possibly can. So I hope that's a satisfactory answer.
So you're saying that we continued to pay the five supernumeraries their pay for school security even though they weren't, I mean, you said it wasn't until May 8 that the governor issued his statement that schools would be closed for the balance of the year. That's what you're referring to on May 8, right?
Actually, that was May 5 and we stopped paying them May 8.
Okay. But the schools did close per executive order in mid-March.
Right, right.
First for a couple of weeks, then I think it was to April 20th, you know, it kept getting extended. I mean, you know, which I certainly understand. It was a very fluid situation and it just kept, you know, it was changing every day. But my, so you're saying that you kept paying them even though they weren't providing school security in case some of the full-time active police officers with the North Haven Police Department came down with COVID, that they could step in?
That's one of the reasons.
But they have done that even if they weren't being paid for their, for their school security work?
So, I gave you, I gave two reasons here. One, because it was an evolving situation on the pandemic. We didn't know if the schools were going to reopen, so that was the first reason. And the second reason was during that time, we got growingly concerned, had growing concerns about COVID infecting our first responders. So the police chief made a call to pay them until May 8, which I support. These are the judgment calls we make.
Okay. Well, you know, I have had a great rapport with Police Chief McLaughlin during my tenure on the Board of Selectmen. I have the greatest respect for how he runs the North Haven Police Department. So I appreciate you giving his viewpoint the deference that is due. It just seemed, you know, I just remembered, I was thinking back more about the adoption of the ordinance and that it was, at that town meeting, that it was heavily emphasized that the, these supernumeraries were providing school security when school was in session. And so, so we can move on. It's been asked and answered. So why don't we move on to the next one?
Yes, go right ahead. You still have the floor, Sally.
Thank you. I again refer, this regard regards Quinnipiac University voluntary payment as it relates to being earmarked to fund the fire department training facility.
Right.
And this again is going back to May 14 and the budget presentation. But this time, the question was posed by Mary White, a familiar name to those who watch our public meetings. She had asked whether the Quinnipiac University voluntary payment will be able to pay for the fire department training facility. And this is at minute 49 and 41 seconds, if anyone wants to go to that May 14 budget presentation to hear her question. And your response was, and I quote, "Yes, we have about 250,000 in Quinnipiac University voluntary payments set aside for that training facility approved by Quinnipiac University," close quote. And so when I heard that answer, it made me recall a Board of Finance meeting. It could have been January or February. It had to be one of those two because they didn't meet in March or April. And during public comment, Michael, you and I talked about this and, because I had asked how the Quinnipiac University voluntary payment, which is a regular line item in our revenue budget, supporting budgeted expenditures, how that could be used for the fire training facility, which is not in any budget that we've ever passed either, including the one that we, that the Board of Finance just passed on May 20. And so I immediately, when I heard your answer to Mary's question that we have about 250,000 in voluntary payments set aside, I looked at the year-end revenue reports for fiscal year 1718 and 1819, and there was no excessive voluntary payment. In 1819, the revenue budget line for Quinnipiac University's voluntary payment was 300,000. And according to the 1819 year-end report, we received 300,000. Same for 1718. Now, in the current budget of 1920, which is winding down, will be ending in a few weeks, we also budgeted for 300,000. And according to the April 30 revenue, April 30, 2020 revenue report, we haven't received anything to date. And so at that Board of Finance meeting, either in January or February, you had told me that only the excess of the 300,000 voluntary payment would go toward the training facility. I don't know if you recall telling me that. So if only the excess is going toward the training facility, where is that excess? I don't see it in any of the recent year-end revenue reports or in the current one. But the way you answered her question, it made it sound like we already have it put aside. So that is the confusion.
All right. So we do have it put aside. So it's already in the general fund. This has been a two-year project right now. So what you're seeing in the, this is again, ladies and gentlemen, I don't, I don't, I don't expect people to understand the intricacies of what goes on in this government. So I'm going to answer this again. So, we have the money set aside. It's in the general fund designated towards the fire training facility. We will be getting 300,000 by the end of this month from Quinnipiac University to fulfill the $300,000 revenue line item that's in the budget for this fiscal year. That money's coming in. And that was, and I just talked to President Olien about this last week. So, the two are mutually exclusive of each other. Does that answer your question, Sally?
Well, that's why I looked back at, right, because you had said that in 19, that for 1920, we hadn't received anything yet and that you were hopeful that we would get the 300,000 that we budgeted for, for this year. And so I'm glad to hear you say you talked with the Quinnipiac president and that we will be getting it. But you say the 250,000 is already set aside in the general fund. What year did that additional 250,000 above and beyond the budgeted amount come in? Because it was not reflected in either the 1718 or in the 1819 year-end revenue reports.
So if you look back, you see the revenue in the last fiscal year, you saw the revenue come in that is associated with the budget revenue line item, right?
Yeah, it was 300, budgeted for 300 and we received 300, yes.
So the way we work this with Quinnipiac is that monies that come in, in this case, 300,000, we use the 300,000. We bifurcate the total amount of money that's given to us. And we assign the majority of it to a revenue line item. The rest is put aside as a community project. It's not budgeted as revenue. That's why you don't see it. All you see is 300,000 that we get every year.
So in what year did they give us the additional 250 beyond the budgeted amounts?
Because it. So, I'd have to look back, but I think it was in the previous fiscal year that we have it, that we received it from them and we've set it aside. But because of all the dilemmas with the engineering and the design of the fire training facility and Chief Januszewski and I trying to get the Building and Trades Group to use their apprentice program to build it, we failed at that so far because those groups have been busy during the past year, up until, up until the pandemic. So, these are the dynamics, Sally, that I'm talking about.
Right. Originally, this was going to be an all volunteer project with labor and materials, but unfortunately, that fell through.
That fell through, right.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just trying to, it's just hard to discern from our revenue reports, which is, you know, like you say, you know, I'm not in town hall every day, but I have every revenue report from, you know, year-end revenue report from the last 10 to 12 years here at my house. And I study them regularly, believe it or not. And I just couldn't see where the extra money came from above and beyond the budgeted amount. I know that, you know, let's not forget that Quinnipiac University also pays regular real estate taxes on property that it owns that is not used for academic purposes. I believe Quinnipiac University owns about a half a dozen properties, maybe more, in the northwest quadrant of town, not for academic purposes. And so even though they are an institution of higher learning, normally tax exempt, they are paying taxes on their non-academic property. But certainly, revenue from them for real estate taxes on this non-academic property, that is in our revenue line, that's in our revenue budget as part of our real estate taxes.
Yes, that's right.
None of that could be assigned to something not in the budget. So, I'm just trying to, would it have been in the CAFRA report then, this money that, this extra money that came in?
The expense, Sally, the expense is not there either, you know.
What expense?
For the, for the training facility.
That's my point, Bill. It's not in, it's not in any of our expenditure budget, so.
Right, the expense is not there. And Mike, didn't we do that with other, some other projects as well?
Yeah, we've, look, the agreement we've had with Quinnipiac University.
We've talked about this like a number of times over the years.
Yeah, but they gave extra money beyond, you know, for years, a few years back, yes, for the playscape, I think, at Ridge and for a couple of other things.
See, so this is analogous to that, though.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to.
They gave us extra money for the, for the training facility, just like they did for the playscapes.
Right, that's right.
And so they gave extra money, but it's not reflected anywhere in any of the revenue reports.
Or were the playscapes on the expense side when we did the playscapes?
So they gave a separate grant check of 250, that's what you're saying?
Yes, I've been saying this for years, that all, you really need to.
Well, not for years, we just had this discussion.
No, I've been saying this since we did the first playscape years ago, so, but.
Didn't we do like lighting too for?
Yeah, we did salt, we did lighting.
Yeah, I know they did something at the softball field over at.
Over at Gateway.
Gateway, sorry, I still call it Orchard Hill.
Orchard Hill.
So, let me just explain.
I was trying to get it out, but it's, to me, you're quicker than me, Sally.
Let me just explain, let me just be very clear on this. Any money they give us for a community project, it's not going to be shown in revenue. What's going to be shown in revenue is what we see this year that we're going to get, the 300,000.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Well, again, what caused confusion, and I don't know if you recall the conversation you and I had at public comment at a Board of Finance meeting, you clearly acknowledged to me that only an excess over the 300,000 would go toward this training facility. And I was satisfied with that. But the way you answered her, Ms. White's question, was, just created an issue in my mind. So you're telling me that they did give an additional amount of money in the form of a grant earmarked for this training facility? And if that's the case, we thank them. I just was not able to see it anywhere. And so, since we had this discussion just a few months ago, that's why I brought it up again. And I thank you for clarifying it. So I think we can move on.
All right, thank you, Sally.
Thank you. And I always, Michael, appreciate you accommodating my discussion items. I've said it countless times, the only opportunity that I could really discuss town affairs with Mr. Frida and Mr. Piper is at Board of Selectmen meetings. I can't just call them up on the phone and say, hey, you know, how's this training facility being paid? I can't do that. And so I very much appreciate you putting discussion items on the agenda to allow me to have a greater understanding or clarification of issues of concern to me. So thank you.
You're welcome, my pleasure, okay.
The good news, the good news is that Mike's made tonight is the confirmation that, I think, I think we've all read about how colleges, you know, are struggling, you know, because they, you know, with the uncertainty in terms of students coming back or new students coming in and dependent on, you know, students even from foreign countries or, you know, like I've been reading about University of Connecticut and Quinnipiac is in the same boat. It's great that they're, you know, still able to give us the 300,000 that they, that they committed to for this fiscal year.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we appreciate it. It is a voluntary payment. And I got to say, I think they're getting a good bang for the buck there because they enjoy many benefits of our town services. And so the 300,000 is appreciated. Years ago, Michael, when they made the first payment, which was, I believe, 142,000, and it was presented to you at a October Economic Development Breakfast, do you remember that?
My old baseball opponent, Don Weinback, I remember. My old baseball opponent, Don Weinbeck, I remember it well, yes.
There you go. Of course, baseball has to come into it. Um, you know, and at that time, you know, you and I had a little disagreement about whether to sign a memorandum of understanding, uh, because also, uh, there, you know, um, the town of Hamden was negotiating with Quinnipiac for a new way to calculate what the voluntary payment would be, and, um, we did not sign a memorandum of understanding, but there was discussion of a rather complex formula of determining how much money that they would give us based on, um, a percentage of the money that we were getting from the state in, in, uh, payment in lieu of taxes, um, based on the assessed value of their, um, of, of their academic properties. And of course, uh, those have been, that assessed value has been going up with each year as, well, maybe it's kind of leveled off now, but a few years back, they were still, um, you know, building and renovating like crazy, adding to the value of their, of the assessed value of their, um, facilities. So I'm not sure if we're still using that old mechanism of determining the amount, but, um, uh, if you know, do you understand where I'm going, what I'm talking about here, Michael?
Yeah, with that complicated formula, it was 40% of 40% of what the pilot was.
Yes, yeah. It wasn't 80%, it was 40% of a 40%.
Of 40%.
Exactly right. And so that was supposed to go up as the assessments went up, but it seems to have leveled off at this 300,000.
Yes.
And it is a voluntary payment, and we do appreciate it, especially as, as Bill so accurately pointed out, this is a tough time for universities, uh, and, and, and we're glad that they're, um, making the 300,000, and, um, they're getting great North Haven services for that 300,000, in my opinion. Um, so we can move on to item seven, gentlemen?
Yes, so I'm going to turn this over to both you and Bill, uh, and Sally and Bill, to take us through the rest of this agenda.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the-
Go ahead, Bill.
Oh, thank you. Um, item number seven on the agenda is to consider and vote on the adoption of the Town of North Haven's Emergency Election Contingency Plan. The resolution, uh, Town of North Haven's Emergency Election Contingency Plans, whereas Connecticut Public Act 11-46, an act concerning the integrity of elections, requires that the registrar of voters of each Connecticut municipality, in conjunction with the town clerk, create an emergency contingency plan for elections, primaries, and referenda to be held within such municipality. Whereas the North Haven registrar of voters and town clerk have developed an emergency contingency plan that will provide solutions for election ballot shortages, as well as strategies for addressing a shortage or absence of poll workers, a loss of power, a fire or fire alarm within a polling place, voting machines, uh, voting machine malfunctions, and weather or other natural disasters, the need to remove and replace a poll worker or moderator, and disorder in and around the polling place. Whereas the emergency contingency plan developed by the registrar of voters and town clerk meet the requirements of Public Act 11-46, it is hereby resolved that this plan is adopted and proved, such plan shall remain on file with the town clerk until such plan is amended by the registrar of voters in consultation with the town clerk and upon approval of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Um, let me just say before I ask for a motion that I have total confidence in our registrars, Patty and Lori Jean. Uh, this is a collaborative, uh, document. This is something that we really need to pass. And, you know, my office has been working with them as we look ahead to the primary season in terms of doing everything we can to even protect the poll workers. Plexiglas shields is an example, because many of the poll workers are senior citizens, you know, the most vulnerable to any infectious disease. So I'm very impressed with the document that Patty and Lori Jean have put together, and that's why it's on the agenda tonight.
I will move the resolution as read by Mr. Piper.
Okay, is there a second?
Um, I'll, um, I'll second.
Okay.
Actually, I read it, but maybe, uh-
Well, it doesn't matter.
That's okay, you moved it, and I'll second.
All right.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Sally, you're up on the appointments.
Number eight, I will move the appointment of Joseph Derico or Derico, 50 Cory Road, as constable to fill the vacant position as a result of the passing of Louis Borelli, term to expire December 5th, 2021. I'll make a motion to approve that appointment as read.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll make a second for that appointment.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, item number nine.
I'll move the property tax refund listed in the agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
I have no questions about those, and I'll make a, I'll second those.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number 10.
Uh, item number 10 is, um, a bond release for bond number P14-04, Blue Hills Development, Joseph Manary, um, to release the entire amount, um, in the amount, um, in the amount of 89,667, one more time, 89,667 dollars with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right.
Um, I'll make a motion to, uh, to release that bond.
I will second it. I, I reviewed the, uh, documents, uh, that were provided to us, um, in support of the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, so I will second this, uh, bond release.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So item number 11, our next meeting here at North Haven's Town Hall Conference Room upstairs for the Board of Selectmen is Thursday, July 2nd. And as I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, that our goal is to bring Sally and Bill back into town hall, and we'll see them for the first time, uh, at this dais since we last were here together back in March. So I look forward to seeing you, Sally and Bill, and that's the plan. Valerie and Alex will be working on that to bring everybody in.
That's great.
Great. I look forward to, uh, being back in the familiar confines of Conference Room 1.
Okay. So with that being said, we're at item number 13, a motion to adjourn.
Right, I don't know what happened to 12. 12 disappeared?
Oh, 12 disappeared, right, so-
So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second.
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we look forward to seeing you next month, everybody, and Sally and Bill, look forward to seeing you back here with me at town hall.
Okay, bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mike and Sally.
Have a good night, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.